With permission of the rest of the board, I will accept the motion, we'll be meeting for the second, if that is in favor, five zero. Now, I'm going to change the order of the items on the agenda, is that all right with everybody? We'll do the sign, discussion of the signed ordinance first.
Okay, the other night, I had talked to Paul a couple of weeks ago, Paul was sorry, I hope all of you know him, and he was talking about the, what's the term of the new, uh, comprehensive, that's the, well, first of all, yeah, the commercial development ordinance, they had addressed signs in that, and they had addressed signs, all of this, the signage across Belgrade would be the same. Paul was concerned about that, we talked to the planning board about it, and their advice was to bring it in here, and we could discuss it and see what we wanted to do. Paul has written ordinances for other towns, he is extremely familiar with the state rules and state laws, and it seems to me, it seemed to me at the time, that within Belgrade, there are different signage requirements. In the village, you don't want internally mounted, or internally lit, or LED signs, you know, thirty-two by thirty-two feet, you just don't want that. You know, along twenty-seven, you want a different kind of sign available to businesses that are going, that want to move in, so, what Denny and Paul have done is, is they volunteered to write a sign ordinance for the town of Belgrade. The planning board is on board, they said that they will help as much as they can, they're not going back to change their ordinance, so, I asked it to be put on the agenda, and I asked Denny and Paul to come in, so we could talk to them. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you. Yes, Danny?
Well, I think we, Paul and I, we brought the idea of signing ordinance to the select ward back in two thousand ten, at that time, the select ward was not there. So, with this new commercial development ordinance, they do have to strengthen it. The problem is, is it was only in Belgrade, and what we think we can do, working with the business community, because we don't have to do anything that kind of runs foul on the business community, but what we thought we'd like to do is get your approval, and then we can go back to the planning board and say, well, the select board said, yeah, you can go ahead and develop a sign ordinance. What we do is develop a sign ordinance, and overlaying the commercial review and development ordinance. So, in fact, we would basically say certain signs are allowed in certain places, and other signs are allowed in other places, so that we keep certain historic character of the town, but at the same time, allow for business development. And there's a need for different signs in those two kinds of regions, primarily because if you're traveling up twenty-seven, fifty miles an hour, fifty-five miles an hour, you need more than thirty-two square feet.
Three car hauls.
No, a thirty-two, what is it?
Two signs, maximum total, the other two square feet.
Thirty-two square feet. You need more than that, this is, that area to be able to see the sign as you're passing by. So, Paul, he's a guru on all of this, I worked with Paul in changing the state DOT rules and regulations back when I was in legislature, and we think we can develop something that meets the needs of the town, but also protects certain, certain character down in the village and stuff like that. Did you want to add something?
Let me just ask for, Paul, either one of you, the electronic part of our sign, what's the area of that, would you say?
Thirty-two square feet.
Thirty-two square feet.
It's not within... No, I've been looking for, trying to get an idea. I'm trying to get an idea of what we're talking about.
This sign's twice the size that is written into the ordinance.
Okay.
Well, that's the thing that got my attention, I quickly read it through, and it's like a shorthand version, but one size doesn't fit all. You have a situation where, the ordinance basically says electronic signs, or in the south of the intersection one thirty-five, over to the city town line, and that's fine. When you start looking at zoning and whatnot, if you want to create a commercial district and attract businesses, that's fine, but now you're talking about also saying it's thirty-two square feet, maximum total, two signs, not each sign, two signs. So, if you look at what's here now, out front, you've got twice that size, and it's barely visible, it's afar, it's car driving by, you can't get enough information, so, so the functionality of the sign is never taken in consideration. Thirty-two square feet works as a number in, in Belgrade Lake Village, but, in my mind, you don't want a thirty-two square foot freestanding sign in front of the village end, you don't want, it's too big. You want to be able to control the freestanding sign and wall sign. It doesn't go far enough in some areas, and in some cases, it goes way too far. So, so it just really needs fine tuning, if you're going to write a sign ordinance, you might as well have sign ordinance, and make it look like what you want to get results in commercial development. If there's any plan for commercial development, this is going to kill it, or it's going to kill the village, because, from a historical perspective, there's nothing preventing people from putting up lighted signs, I don't think you want them down there, and there's no way to stop it. In fact, there's no way to stop them anywhere, and that includes the West Road, the Castillon Road, I mean, any place that's a, a village district, including Depot. If that's what you have in mind, you know, then, I, I don't think that that's what you have in mind, but, in the discussion with the people on the planning board, this is not a, an ordinance, it's not a zoning ordinance, I didn't go into that detail, I think we can do it with the, with the sign ordinance. Whether you have a zoning regulation or not, the districts are all laid out, you just have to identify them with a comprehensive sign code, and I think that's what needs to be done.
We intend this, this to be a separate ordinance, it's not part of...
Three sign ordinance overlaying separate ordinance.
It'll work in conjunction with...
Overrule the commercial, you get about nine, well, there's nine commercial districts, and then there's also, you have to take into consideration industrial locations, like Hammond Lumber and Gagney, and some of the other contractors' sites, that, because they're already there, they're being considered industrial, but how do you deal with it? You know, you can't just say one thing fits all. You know, people might want to go a long way now, but, you know, not everybody's going to do that, they don't want to do the wrong thing, and, and you have no way to stop something you don't want in this ordinance, and quite honestly, you're not going to get development, in my mind, you know, nobody's going to come in and buy a lot and want to put a small supermarket, thirty-two square foot sign isn't enough.
Hammond Lumber's sign on their building, it's like eighty square feet, at least, the one that says Hammond Lumber. You know, so, the numbers were written by K.B. Cobb, they don't know anything about sign ordinance.
Was it Kevin K.B. Cobb?
I believe so.
But it's not that you...
And Clayboard was the consultant in their site, their commercial development review.
So, you really have, you know, I, I have written ordinances for towns, and like Denny said, wrote a couple of bills, about, I spent twenty, twenty years there, don't ever want to go back to Augusta, but, the point is, is that, as a taxpayer, this is not going to help my taxes as a residential property owner, and it's not going to help the town of Belgrade to get the kind of growth that you have to look at. You know, we talk about sprawl, that came up in a conversation. All right, last week, I went to Farmington on the Wilton Road, that's sprawl, that's what you want to avoid. Go to Winthrop, get a couple little pockets, all right, maybe you can deal with that, well, how do you get there without a zoning ordinance? But one way to do it is with a sign ordinance, because businesses are not going to go where it's a problem, you don't want to go where it's easier. So, if you don't want to get into the full zoning ordinance, I understand, you could deal with businesses using a sign ordinance, and protect historic properties, and do other things, too.
So, the idea would be that we get your approval, because the planning board is not doing anything without your approval. We go back to the planning board and say, we've gotten your approval, then we work with businesses, too, because we want to make sure we take care of their concern, and develop a sign ordinance that is intended to meet everyone's concerns, for commercial growth in the appropriate areas, for, for historical preservation in terms of the character of the downtown village, and maybe Depot even. So, those are the primary things that we'd like to do, and I know Paul has the expertise, I can work with him to talk to the businesses and things like that, all we need is, you're okay, if you don't give us your okay, that saves us work, that's fine, but it also threatens the community in terms of commercial law.
The big concern now is that if this is part of this war, that goes to the voters as a referendum, and nobody ever, none of the voters know what's in it, it's going to pass, it's going to be a problem.
Well, I, I wouldn't approve of this, yeah, the way it's worded, I had issues with some of the wording in here, and I want to thank you, too, for coming forward offering to do this, so that if we do something, that we do it in the right manner, and if this helps us avoid some type of zoning issue, because I know that's never passed before, so, this puts it into a position where we can keep the big signage down here, and allow whatever is appropriate.
Legacy businesses should be exempt.
Add the town office will be exempt.
You can't see the town office sign anyhow, so...
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
It just seems to me like it was a great idea, we really ought to do that.
I'm with the motion that we give, if the wording, the wording is right, give Mrs. Ketchel and Lassard permission to go ahead, develop the ordinance.
Working with the planning...
Work, thank you, working with the planning board, and then bring it back to the planning board and us for review. Do you think you can have it done in time to get on the, on the town meeting?
Probably not.
Probably not enough time.
I think the planning board, I think that would be the wrong...
All right, we won't put it, we won't put it in time limit, but, but the motion is to give them permission to go ahead and develop an ordinance in conjunction, in conjunction with the planning board, and then bring it back to us for review.
Second, maybe.
Maybe second.
You can get something in six weeks.
Well, if you can't, you can't, I don't want, I don't want to rush and get something that's trashy because you had to rush it, you know, so if you can do it, that's great, if you can't, don't worry about it.
Don't I mention around, I mean, I think your input, I saw, both inputs is great, but you know what the townspeople are more than likely accept, and that's going to be the critical things, because they're going to step into the bill with the board on it, and it's like...
Well, I think the crucial thing is to make sure all of the businesses that are currently existing have the ability to, to have a say, number one, and two, I think legacy businesses should be left alone, so to speak.
What's a legacy business?
Existing.
Ordinarily.
Grandchild.
It's a grandfather son.
Hammond, Gagney, us.
Okay, grandchild.
I keep talking about us.
Yeah, I know, I heard you.
Building codes are usually grandfather, unless you write in a way of allowing somebody to recapture something. Signs, the Main Travel Information Act, when they got rid of the billboards, they basically established a situation where a business could recapture the value of its billboard off-premise sign in five years. So, it took five years to implement conformance, so all the billboards were gone. Normally, on an off-premise sign, you don't do that, you allow it to die out, in other words, when the sign goes away, it goes away, and you conform with the new law, unless you want to write it in, so that, you know, you give somebody five years to remove a sign itself.
We would also make legal what currently is illegal operating in the town, well, tell me, the Christie store, and Hammond's signs, the way they're operating right now, as well as I know, are illegal because they change more than once every twenty minutes, so we would make those legal.
Illegal under state law?
They're illegal under state law.
State law, yeah. Well, I'd say write it the way you see, think it should be written, and see what you come up with. That agree with everybody?
How fast do they change?
State law says once every twenty minutes.
They change about every twenty seconds, so Sidney must have...
Sidney rewrote their ordinance, Steve, Steve Seabrook, actually, I wrote it, and I, I put in ten seconds, he says, well, how fast can I do it? That's a little technical, two seconds, that's time and temperature, it's a changeable sign. He says, okay, well, that's what I'm going to put in, and that's what got passed. Again, you have a situation where people in a room don't know what you're talking about, you know, and I keep, you know, I sold them that sign, and I keep telling them, I says, you know, people can't read that fast, you know, it doesn't do you any good unless it's a time and temperature, you know, the ten seconds would have been okay, you know, to read two panels, maybe as you drive through, but any faster, it's just a nuisance.
And there's an issue with the cartoons and all that stuff.
All right, let me see what you come up with, we didn't do it, we haven't had a discussion. Paul in favor?
No.
Ready now?
Yes. I just think it's, they're trying to throw some zone in there, and I just...
Well, it's really not intended to zone, what they're trying to do is look at the sign issue, the way people would want, we're not trying to zone properties, this is what...
It's done in the town.
No, we're not trying to...
We already got started on that, I mean, there was just a discussion a few years ago about intersection here and there, and village area, it's not a zone, where I can rule.
All right, let's move on.
I, I understand, and you may be right, and I want to think about it, but my two cents are...
All right, back to the agenda.
Hey, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much for doing this. Old town office right of way.
Yes, gee, I heard back from Linda Connery, and she said that it would be the twenty-five hundred dollars plus the, oh my gosh, what's the phrase I'm looking for?
On your speed or something?
Well, the value, um...
Yeah, you got it wrong.
Market value?
Yeah. See what it says.
Market value, yes, the current market value, so, and she said that the offer is standing, it's, you know, it's nothing that we have to do, and the new property owner would certainly be whoever, you know, buys it, hopefully somebody soon.
The market value of the script they're going to sell.
Correct, yeah, you know, that's certainly an offer on the table for whoever buys it as well, so I don't think it's anything we have to do, so...
Pass on it for right now?
Yeah, I agree with that, thanks.
Land donation.
So, we did some research, and the land does abut town land, the town owned piece is the yellow one, the, the one that they want to donate is the pink one. I'm not sure what, how you want to proceed with that.
Well, it's cheaper, except the donation, they take it through taxation, which we then, that hasn't been...
Right. So, both of those pieces probably are landlocked, basically?
Yeah, sixty, one of that, sixty-four, I want to go, I don't know what one is that, which would give us access to it, but it's small land, isn't it?
Is there any access at all?
Helicopter.
Or is it just...
It must be a right of way.
I said, yeah, there's got to be a right of way, you can't landlocked, people's property.
This probably goes in through sixty-four, but I don't, I don't know. That'd be some more research.
You want to pass the line to the town for approval?
Why not? Send it to them and see what happens, I mean, we really don't get any more land, but...
So, are you going to make motion?
I'll make a motion to do an article to accept the law, not second as a donation.
Need a second, any other discussion?
Okay, I'll contact the property owner.
Does anybody have insurance?
I need a ruling from you folks as to whether or not you're going to pay a hundred percent of the employees' health benefits, as in the employee handbook, or if you're going to continue with past practice, because we have to...
Where are we done in past?
It's a flat rate, and I, yeah, it's not a percentage, it's, I think, I want to say it's a fifty-two dollars per week that comes out of people's check, does that sound right?
I don't know what the number is, we kept it at a certain dollar amount, and any new increases, they were going to pick up the tab.
Right. Yeah, the town pays, I think, five twenty-something, and the employees are responsible.
And again, just to, to address, apparently, if it's in the, if it's, if it's the town policy, it just never got upgraded, like a lot of things never got upgraded, to keep up with what the select ward has approved in the past, but, this was something that was put in place probably three years ago, and so, at least three years, yeah.
Well, it never got changed, you know.
So, we are, we're not, we're not paying a hundred percent today.
No.
We're paying a percentage of it.
I thought it got changed, because we...
Well, it was supposed to get changed, because we, we made that ruling, and then every year since then, we...
That has to happen.
Boy, I seem to remember, well, maybe I'm wrong, yeah.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is that you pay the hundred percent, because if you don't, and somebody decides to come back on you, you're going to be in trouble with the Department of Labor.
Well, we, we have a record where we made the motion, we officially made it that way, so, the Department of Labor can come back on us, but it's because our policy wasn't updated the way it was supposed to have been, so, that would be an argument I think we could win, and we started going the way we're going, because that's exactly the way the state domain's going. State domain does not pay all health insurance benefits anymore.
Right.
It's partially paid, so we was, it's just like when we do roadwork, we use state wages, Mars uses state wages and so forth, so we've tried to not get out of sync with the state, and the state, there's a lot of things that have influenced where we are today, and it was, a lot of it was brought on because of the huge increases we've gotten from our shooting rate, which we have absolutely no control over, so, we keep our big budget in line, and then we get, still get huge raises that we have to pass on to the taxpayers, and now here we go, we're going to have three more pieces of property we're going to take, and it's last year, it's more than that, and it just, you know, we're, that's, that's the discussion that we've had, and that's where we've got to where we are now. It's not that we're not very sympathetic and caring about our employees, we don't mean give them raises from time to time, and I think it's crying shame, because here we are, we're getting shafted in our back with something that we should be able to, it's great, I'm not allocating education, it's fantastic, and I think that's a high priority, but you know what, it's also a high priority to protect our taxpayers from losing their homes, so, we kind of, the only way this board can do anything about that is by controlling the town budget, and it's, it's, you know, I have a lot of experience about all of that stuff, I'm not sure most of his book does, but where do you...
So, what percentage is contributed by the employee right now?
Well, it's the balance of whatever the premium is, minus that flat rate that you pay.
Okay, depending on, okay.
We're self-insured, basically, so, we are in somewhat control of what our premiums are, and I think there's a pool of money, and that pool of money must be, I don't remember how that all worked, but there was a pool of money that got established.
We took the money that we didn't pay for the insurance and put it in a pool.
Yeah, some of the money.
Are we in violation of state law or the current arrangement?
If you have an employee that started after you made that motion, that signed the employee handbook saying that, that says that it's going to pay a hundred percent, I think...
We're obliged to pay a hundred percent.
I think so. But, like already said, though, I mean, it would be something that, you know, the courts would have to battle out, and I'd never know which way they'll rule.
If it came to that.
Right.
I guess the thing is, first off, I think, the number one thing we need to do, that policy has to be changed instantly, and we can act on that, and it should be, but we've already acted on it, so why it wasn't done?
I thought we did and signed it when we did the updates on it, boy, I was ninety-nine percent sure, because I remember that was a paper discussion, we had the employees in here and everything, back in those, part of it then, and explaining what was going to happen, and...
A lot of things that didn't get done.
Ah, you could...
I mean, you know, Ricky, that's, there's, this is one of those...
A little bit outside the box, too.
Well, an employee comes in and signs the employee handbook, and expects to be treated by that handbook.
Then we have an obligation.
Huh?
Then we have an obligation.
It seems to me, that's nothing against the contributory healthcare, I think that's fine.
I guess the answer to what part of your question is, when the employee is hired, isn't there an explanation of what they're going to get paid, so they understand that they're going to get this much health insurance, and they're going to have to pay this much? So, I think...
So, they are informed of that?
So, like, we just need to step up and get our policy updated, and make a note in that, that this was officially changed by the select ward in whatever meeting it was, and it would have been through the budget process, because we passed that, we had a lot of discussion.
We put in time in it.
Well, we put it in, and that's why we went out and found, because the insurance was really getting to be really expensive, so we ended up changing them to what we have now, which is supposed to be, for the employees, a lot of them have to bet on, and we've used it quite a bit.
Well, it had to be before I was on the budget committee, because I don't remember talking about that, do you?
Well, yeah.
I do for my own money.
What was that?
I do for my own.
Oh, yeah.
Sleeping?
I mean, we have that.
I'm under the towns umbrella, but I...
No, I, I, no, we had quite a go around about that.
Because it has a retirement...
Don't ask me to do.
Well, now, didn't, no.
I wasn't in on that, because I was getting done, when it was going over that, I never had to pay that.
When was that?
I got done two and a half years ago.
So, it was during the, last term?
Yeah. Is it spring, fall?
I want to say it just before that term, there was several meetings.
I got done in May, so it was...
It was before that?
It was before that, so, hey, two thousand what?
Fourteen, right?
Yeah, fourteen, probably.
So, it's probably back in thirteen, my guess, probably end of the summer, early fall, my guess, because we spent several meetings doing this.
Okay. But I don't think you passed it until later, because I never had to pay anything the whole time I was here.
But that's probably when we started it, for the next year's budget, that's when you started.
Right, man.
So, that would have been for the thirteen budget or the fourteen budget?
I would say for the fourteen budget.
Which meant probably it was during the budget deliberations for thirteen, I mean, in thirteen, late thirteen.
Yeah. I mean, I'm guessing, but that's what I've been...
But that is an issue, and thank you for picking up on it, and I guess it's up to the board, because you guys won't do it.
Anthony has been harassing local, excuse me, local insurance agents, too. We had one come in last week, and he's, wants to come back tomorrow, tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, and go over some more stuff, but I spoke with the gentleman who actually was prepared to come in tonight and answer any questions about the, the premium and the plan and stuff, and how it compares to our existing policy, and he was telling me that it doesn't matter who you go through, the rate is the same, because it's established by the state of Maine, so it's just a matter of who, who you want to work with, I guess.
Who's going to take care of you?
The regional sandcooper, all standard and established by hand.
Yeah, that's what we're going to do.
Well, we have, we're self-insured, so there's got to be some clause there.
How are we self-insured?
Well, we have a pool of money in there to pick up for...
What the insurance doesn't pick up?
Oh, the, the health reimbursement account, yeah, H.R.A.
But that's not so, I wouldn't use the term self-insured on that. We have, we have an insurance policy.
Yeah.
And everyone is going to be exactly the same?
That's what he said, I'm still waiting to see.
It's just not allowed to go across state lines to buy insurance, you got to buy it from one place? Buy it from any place in Maine, so...
Any place in Maine, anybody that's licensed to...
Now, that may, you know, that may change.
Most people come in, and they can, even all ready.
Was it six, six people you contacted?
Yeah, it was, it might have been more than that, but, you actually got back...
You that actually got back.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything we can.
Taylor till next meeting.
Yeah, well, he's also looking at the workers comp too because that was one thing that Dan Newman had, had requested redo, so.
There is companies out there that want to pay him that.
Motion table?
I'll make a motion to table.
Maiden seconded.
Maiden seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you.
My phone never ever rings.
I guess one of the things that I have to ask is, is that we have some numbers that show.
I've got a smartphone leaving, can I call you back when I get home?
Uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you should know what to tell them, yeah.
Well, going back to the previous, pay the whole benefit, which is.
Never, ever, ever rings.
They're going to get some numbers, well, so.
Yeah.
Good. All right. Your appointments.
Yeah.
I'm a control officer.
Did we put that up to bid?
Nope.
No, we didn't. I thought we was going to, something, wasn't there?
No, not that one.
I don't think that one.
No, not that one.
Are there many people that are?
I haven't heard any more complaints. Have there been more complaints?
No.
I think so. I think since we had a little chat, things.
Was it that one?
Yeah, all right. Good.
So Kathy Ross, our animal control officer.
Make that motion.
Second.
Maiden seconded to appoint Kathy Ross. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Health officer.
Karen Childs has agreed to do another year.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Maiden seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Five zero. Towny story.
Nan has also agreed to do another year.
I believe that we accept her. Somebody better second that.
He's got his phone off the hook right now in case that didn't.
Are you going to call for a vote there, Mr. Barrett?
I will stop, stop talking, I will. All those in favor? Five zero. Emergency management director.
Would be Mr. Diamon.
Oh, God, another Diamon.
Will be accepted.
Maiden, second, second, I'll second it. Maiden seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm not going to.
Yeah, just the same.
For, for one extension.
Yep.
He makes too much money to manage. He doesn't take any money.
No, he doesn't.
Okay, four closures.
We still have three properties that's a full closure and I was reviewing the procedure for placing tax acquired property out to bid. So at our first meeting in January, I'll have to make a formal request for those three properties to go out to bid. And I just wanted you guys to have this to review those three properties, unfortunately. One is just a piece of land, the other two do have, one's a kina, the other one is a home, so.
One's a kina?
The one on, would you call it a camp, Cheryl?
No, it's a house.
Oh, it is a house, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's on nine row.
Yeah.
One on the restroom?
Yeah.
What part of the restroom is that? What down there are you?
No, it's on, well, it's on, almost up to the, stop, what, stop sign.
It's up there.
The white chaming was, chaming.
Yeah.
That story, that, that, that.
The big A-frame?
Yeah.
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 Oh.
I heard that he's in prison.
Yeah.
We can't find him, he's in prison.
Yeah.
He is in prison, we can't.
Really? Care for closing if he's in prison? Guys got rights, same right.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to tell this until Wednesday, January?
Well, no, this was just informational anyway, just.
Information only, yeah.
So, yeah.
All right.
So that'll be coming back in January if you.
So nobody's living with the free properties or, or closing on it. It's, one is land, one is, one is guy in prison.
The wing's not a lot, it looks like it's just land.
Yeah.
It's, it's the lot, if you notice, it's on the right hand side as you're going south. And it's got a van parked, it's been parked out in front of the place forever.
Yeah.
And it's a big A-frame type thing.
What, what about that, where is that, trailer?
I didn't look at the, the tax card.
I'm surprised he owns a land because usually you don't sell.
Is it real?
It's not real.
Russell.
Russell's sofa, I don't know if he's here.
All right.
No.
You end closing.
Can we close at noon on the thirtieth so we can close out the books and all the reports and all that other good stuff? I guess it's been done in the past. So we're not here till midnight.
I've got a problem with it.
Make a motion.
So moved.
Moved, second. Moving, seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Make sure it's advertised well.
Yeah, five zero. Put them on a sign every ten seconds.
You can see one side.
All right. Cost of living increases.
Wait, wait, who moved and seconded that?
Second was.
I moved.
And second was Cheryl.
Cheryl.
Thank you.
Cost of living increases.
Are you going to do one this year? A cost of living increase to take effect January third, it would be.
A payroll increase?
Yeah. We usually do, don't we?
Well, it's, I think the two percent's been put into everybody's budget, so.
Yeah.
But what is actually the, the cost of living?
Cost of living increase.
Two percent?
No, I know, I see.
What is the cost of living, yeah?
Nationally?
Yeah.
It's point three.
Well, that's what, that's, I believe that's the cost of living increase.
No.
That's what.
That's social security.
Social security.
And we figured out, it comes out to exactly what I'm getting now.
Yeah.
Mine was always more.
Exactly the same.
Yes.
Well, the cost of living, it depends really probably where you live.
Well, I think of here in Belgrade.
Well, in Belgrade, they're, they're honest to contribute more.
Yeah.
What are you going to do? We're lucky, we at least we have a government that we can work with and help control our operation of the town.
I mean, he's, I mean, a two percent to me is not a problem.
Yeah.
I think that.
We've cut them, we've cut them off quite a bit over the past few years, so.
I'll move that we, the cost of living increase be two percent.
Two percent.
Down the board.
Second. Maiden seconded, Gary, Gary made the motion. Cheryl seconded. Other discussion? All in favor?
Two percent. Go ahead, go ahead, whatever.
Five zero.
Was that affirmative?
No, I'm just. You're going to national cost of living?
I was just taking a spin and seeing what it come out of. It's pretty good. I don't know, whatever. If you can get that kind of raise, I can tell you that.
Did you vote in favor or didn't vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Doesn't matter.
Well, it does.
My vote doesn't matter shit. Boy, you gotta vote for us, so what?
Love you Ricky.
No, but I mean, my just, so first, what I, what I would appreciate is, tell me why we shouldn't give the employees a two percent raise. I mean, just, and if you have your argument, I'd love to hear it because you know what? I'll support your vote if it makes sense to me.
Well, I'm just looking at what other people, what other towns are doing, what are, what are they doing? What's that a school district doing? You know, the big businesses, I mean, such small.
It's better than two percent.
I don't believe it. I, I have two percent at the school for a while, at least the workers have it, maybe management has, but the people that are, what do you want to call it, sports staff? None of that there. So it's kind of, I'm, you know.
Well, actually, actually, we, we should also, I know we already voted on that, but we, we got people that are, is this going to be across the board? Because we got people that are getting, getting raised because the state says the minimum wage is going to be X, Y, Z, right? I know.
But.
You know, we got people that now are going to get more money because the minimum wage is such or no. I don't, I was thinking that was impacting our budget.
But again, how's the evaluations work? When they have their evaluation, they get raised too. So are we giving two raises a year? That's some of my questions. I guess, is that what's happening? So we'll say at the end of six months, somebody gets a, whatever we get for raise, then at the end of the year, they're going to get another two percent?
You mean somebody that's coming off probation?
No. I mean, we have people, we do an evaluation once a year.
Right.
Because they go up to.
It's an error base, you know, like.
Yeah.
Evaluation.
Yeah.
Do we have error based pay increases? I don't think we did.
No.
Well, I think that was supposed to be done in January.
Yes.
So this is.
So we can only get up to two percent?
Up to two percent.
I'll go along with that.
What I meant was that if, if somebody, if somebody's going to get a raise after an evaluation, that's, that's good.
Yeah.
Then you have that leeway to get that raise. If they, if they've had some part performance and they, they kind of failed in their evaluation, then they wouldn't get that raise. That's what I meant by that.
Right. So the way the motion was, was across the board, two percent increase for all employees?
Up to two percent.
No, two percent for all employees was the motion.
That was the motion, yep. That was the motion.
So in other words, it doesn't matter what the narrative is, they get a raise.
The way the motion was, correct.
Okay, now we're going to vote for sure.
So we've already voted?
No, okay, then I voted against it.
Okay.
Now you voted for it, I asked you.
All right. Whatever.
Let me ask you a question. Would you prefer to, to, to try to performance?
I would.
Then I'll withdraw the motion.
I can't, we're.
We voted.
Okay, then.
See, that was my story, so we got a vote.
Trying to think how to, how to write. You voted with the prevailing side, having voted with the prevailing side, ask for reconsideration of the motion?
You can do that.
Yeah. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I will ask for reconsideration of the motion.
All those in favor, reconsider it.
Reconsider.
Five zero, okay. Somebody make a motion?
I always got his hand up.
What's up, Alan?
In, in all of our budget discussions that I can remember, we have always talked about budgeting amount and then talking about the fact that after an employee evaluation or assessment, there would be an up to clause in that.
I think that's.
Isn't that the way we've always done?
The way the motion was way.
The way it was worded, it was across the board, it's flat.
So we're changing it to up to.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the thing is, we normally don't do it until half the budget, but this really is probably a good time to do it because then they can get their budgets in line and we don't have to come back and they don't have to back something else. It's up to two percent.
I'll second that.
What is, restate your motion, please.
I make a motion that the cost of living increase can be up to two percent for all employees.
I'll second that.
Maiden seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Thank you. Really, it's better to throw everything out on the table and let's all get a better feel for it, I guess.
Okay.
You wanted that.
Yeah. Next one's town line sign. This is one I, I asked to have put on. We put up very nice signs on all the town lines except for Route twenty-seven coming down from Rome, there's no sign there. And I'd like to request that we put up Welcome to Belgrade sign.
You know, and I thought about that after we had this discussion last time. Have we checked with Gary to make sure there isn't a sign? I could have.
I was going to.
We honored one for the, we, they were supposed to be on at every part.
There's no sign there, there's a, it's a hard sign.
No, no, and I know that, I just wonder if it never got put up.
That's a possibility, but we ought to put it up.
Well, absolutely, I mean.
I, I, I'm signing.
Line twenty-seven? Twenty-seven coming down, in Rome, there is nothing there. Should be about at the bridge.
Just past the bridge.
Just past the bridge.
Yeah, but we, we own that piece of property on the east side. Really perfect place for a sign, it's near the, near the dry hydrant.
I don't even know if we really need a sign, they know and they just say where they are.
And every, every other point in every town has got a very nice sign.
I'm joking.
I understand was an early, nice Ricky Dammel idea to put those signs up. I was told that.
You were?
Yes, you're to blame. I think that, I think every other town I have. So you guys probably ought to vote for that.
On the sign, it could, it could be, we have the sign and there's just no legal place to put it.
That's kind of what I'm thinking, that, because I am sure we honored one for every.
Well, it is. I'm just thinking, based on what you're saying, it should be, maybe we got no legal place to put it.
I think you put it on that property right next to the bridge.
Well, we do it on both sides. We do it on both.
One side, one side.
Yeah, we do.
You look the other side. You look the other side, you, they'll tell how many signs that you bought.
Well, if we have one, we're not gonna buy a second one, but we oughta put one up. And if we don't have one, then we will get one, if you're so moved that way.
And you can, Scott and Statu put ones out and then Gary took over. So, they kinda did it together, some of it, so.
They really are nice, to tell you the truth, they are. Yeah, we take credit for that. I would take the credit if I were you two, that would be a good thing.
No, let me tell you what, there was a lot of discussion.
Oh, no. They looked really nice.
One of the actual, there's a lot of research behind to get it laid out in Belgrade, people.
Took a long time to get the picture right, too.
Why don't we, why don't we see if, if I made one? And see if they'll get me put up? I feel this.
Did you get those from White Sign? Or was it somebody else? Oh, Sign Rex?
Yeah, there's a little one halfway up the farm, a little farther.
Yeah, I don't think it was Sign Rex. Maybe.
Yeah, I think it was.
Well, why don't we vote to put one up? If we have a sign, we'll use it. If we don't have a sign, then we'll get one.
So moved.
So moved.
Do we have the money to buy the sign? Do we have to put it in this year's budget? That's my next.
Well, this is.
It'll have to be this year's budget, well, next year's budget.
Next year's budget, we'll have to.
I think we, I think the thing, I, I don't think we need a motion to do this because we already, that was the rule at every, at every section.
Major?
We just need to find out, do we have a sign? If there is, please just then put it up.
Okay.
And if they know?
And it may have been, it may have been a state issue, but they couldn't put it up there, it was legal issue, I can't remember.
I wouldn't think so, I think, I think you can. I'll, uh, there's a motion on the floor. Now, I'll withdraw the motion.
I don't think we need. I don't think we need. I don't think we need. And I guess if, if
You died for.
We don't have a sign.
Yeah.
And where are we gonna get the money, Gary? Is there money somewhere up for this? I mean, we'll have to research.
Yeah, it depends on how much, I'll have to.
Well, they were, they were kinda pricey, but not, they're not bad, but.
Yeah.
I think a $5,000, $6,000, we was having enough. All right, thank you very much.
I shook your ass.
Yes, sir.
You do a flash.
Oh, not in Belgrade. That's on, that's on the open.
That big blue? That's the, that's the business group.
That's right.
That's the business group.
No, no, they just wanted to go to Belgrade.
Yeah, right.
Coming, coming down.
Has nothing to do with the town of Belgrade.
No, the one off Belgrade is a, is a Belgrade sign.
Yeah.
The one coming down the Smithfield Road. Route 8 was, you never go straight, 8 or 11. Coming down Route 8.
Is that the main one?
No, coming south from Rome, there is a Welcome to Belgrade sign there, which is one of the town signs.
When you leave the, the little store down there, a few years, there's one up there because.
I put sign up, Jenny.
It's just past.
Just past.
Just past the timeline.
Yeah.
It's just south of town.
Yeah, it's there because that's where it started.
But not Belgrade, you, you ever been up there?
No. I really haven't been.
There's also one down towards Oakland.
Okay.
Coming this way, you see it.
So, I'm, I'm sure there was one for 27 up there, something, because I know.
Good, that would be good.
Yeah.
Okay, one more. Questions on the mark?
One, one by 169, $19,881.39.
I'll second that.
All right.
Aiden seconded.
My only question is, uh, this is probably the last one, we all squared up on all the paving and stuff, so. There's no more bills coming from Road Commission or.
There'd probably be one more, wouldn't there? End of the year?
Um, I think we're gonna try to do one next week, if she got a pile of bills.
There's nothing around. Yeah. They have it, we have to come inside.
There's Business Communications of Maine, $300 for plane travel.
That's the phone line here still.
That's the phone line.
Well, if nobody else is gonna ask, what the hell are we doing running Santa Claus suits?
That is for the Santa store.
The business group Santa store? Christmas store?
We gotta have a suit for the Santa store.
Yes, you do.
What is Rebee Rose site?
Rebee is, um, that's where the weapons are.
Thank you. And the fireplace from Home Depot?
Yeah. That's a heater.
It's a heater?
Yeah.
Where at?
Uh, Melanie's office.
Not enough heater there?
How expensive was that? That was pretty pricey, wasn't it?
$92.
$92.
I guess, isn't that bad?
The next one's a leaf blow, that was three, $100. $100 a leaf blow. All right, um, all that we, the effort we put into the heating system here, she still has to have a. Okay.
So, how does she, is, how is that heated in there?
The way you like.
Just the, there is ringed. Does she have a thermostat that she controls? It doesn't, what does it control, outside?
No, you can't, yeah.
You can't, well, bring in heat, you can't turn it back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You said it, and that's what it is.
Well, you.
You can turn it up again, but.
Yeah, you can turn it up, but it takes too long for it to warm up.
Yeah.
That's what the idea of these mini splits are.
She doesn't have all those costs, does she?
It's outside, blowing air that way.
Well, compared to the mini split, that's a pretty cheap way to heat that office.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions on the mark? No, no discussion. Anybody else, all right. All in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Can I make your update?
Um, so, as I said, by now, everybody's heard about Janet's fiance. I talked to her Monday, which was, yeah, yesterday. The days are running together again. Um, she did say that he is being cremated and they're going to have a service on Saturday, January 21st with a spring burial sometime later in the year up at North Newportland where his family is. I'm not sure how long she's gonna be out, but Jared is handling things swimmingly down at the library. I checked in on him today, so, and the trustees are going in covering his lunch, so, but she's, she's having a hard time with it, so. Any positive thoughts her way would be appreciated.
Where's the service gonna be, do you know?
I don't. I don't. I know, um.
I'm sure there'll be an update in January, but it's quite a long result.
Yeah, yeah, I'll send an arrangement.
So, yeah, I was gonna ask if the town was gonna do anything.
Yeah. Um, and I need to know what you wanna do about an interim assessor. Do you want, uh, cause his contract expires next week. Gary gig, his contract expires next week and the proposals aren't due till the 16th of January, cause we had to give them enough time to put in a decent proposal, so, um, what do you wanna do for the two weeks? Do you just, do you wanna have him come in?
Like he is, I guess.
Well, we pay him quarterly is the problem. We don't, he doesn't have a per diem rate.
Well, find out what the per diem rate is.
Yeah.
Is he willing to do that?
Or do we actually even need anything, two weeks? Can we get by without it?
Um, I guess it depends on what the proposals look like that come back.
Well.
And how long it's gonna take to, you know.
Whoever comes in is gonna have to get up to date, it's just whether somebody comes... Do you know what his assignment book looks like for the next couple of weeks? Probably.
I don't, yeah. I don't.
We'll just see what he, what he, what he'll go for. If he's way out of whack, then we'll have to change it to him.
Yeah, if somebody has a question, they want it answered, type of thing, so.
When'd you negotiate that? It was two weeks, you said? Negotiate the two weeks.
Well, you could kinda figure out what it figures out per day. He had a number, how much he got a day.
Is he willing to do it? That's a bigger, a bigger question. If he's not willing to do it, he's not gonna, it's, he's dead.
Yeah. I did talk to him briefly about it and he seemed like he'd be okay with that, so.
Then I'd get a per diem rate and see what it is and, yeah.
This probably, he already broke down his alley, you know, he had the, so I'm sure it's gonna be right, he's not wanting to, took on Jack something up on it.
Okay. Um, I had just a reminder for the budget workshop next Wednesday, not Thursday, Wednesday. Um, and I'd like to start at 6:00. Can you get here for 6:00, Rick?
Well, depends what's the rest.
Well, that's true.
I'll make it tonight, anyway. Yeah, I mean, I'll do my best, if not go without me.
It's Wednesday the 28th?
Yes.
At 6:00. Yep.
Yeah. Um, and I did put in front of you, um, revised budget sheets, and what I did was I broke them down, um, by cost center, but also by division of cost center, so administration is just completely on one page and code enforcement is on one page. Um, all the backup is still in your budget books, but, um, and I have explanations next to a lot of the lines that are different, so. Um, I also redid the warrant articles, so they match the cost center. And it's not gonna be, the warrant, the town meeting warrant isn't gonna be any longer than it has historically. It may actually be a couple articles shorter, um, by doing it this way, cause I know that that was a concern for Jack, so, um, it just made sense to do it this way because if we're changing the accounting system, we gotta do it by cost center, so, let's.
Get used to what it's gonna be.
Yeah, it was just, it was, left too much room for mistakes in the math, trying to take it from here and there and everything, so, um, if you have any questions that you come up with ahead of time, uh, before the meeting next week, if you could email me so I could do the research and, um, come prepared with answers, that would be great. Otherwise, we'll do the best we can. And Joyce got an email today from RSU 18 asking if you guys, um, you had to add the town officials to the emergency and budget announcements that are streamed through phone calls for RSU 18. Do you?
Stream phone calls, you said?
No.
What did you say? Stream, oh, stream.
So, do you want them to have your personal number, or do you want me to just field the call and get the message to you? How has that worked in the past?
I don't really remember getting a call.
Yeah, we never get calls from them.
No, okay. All right.
I guess if, if there's anything.
What, is this?
Anything we should know, give us an email, give me an email.
Well, I think this is in case of emergency.
It is an emergency?
Yeah, so it's, yeah, only an emergency or a budget announcement.
Yeah, so something's, they got mine anyways.
They would, yeah, they could have mine.
They have my home number.
Okay.
Yeah, this is like a bomb scare at the school. Yeah. You'd get, you'd get an outpatient on it.
Right.
So, we can get scared too.
They use a, um, they keep that pretty high stash for one.
Bomb scare?
Yeah, they have to send that on. If you're with, there's, uh, kids are coming home early because of, um, something.
Okay.
And the last thing, I got an email today from Carol Johnson asking if you, uh, the select board would be willing to have a work session with them on January 10th, the Friends Group, to discuss, um, material and, um, how much you're gonna ask for them to have an escrow.
100%, 100%. There was, we left no wiggle room on that.
Right.
So, we gotta have cash money, 100%.
Right, but that's gonna depend on what they choose for a material.
Yeah, whatever we choose.
Right.
It would be, cause we're not gonna, it's, in no way we can ask the voters to vote on something if we don't have the dollars in our pocket.
What is this one, January?
The road through, through Belgrade Lakes.
It was the reserve amount that was supposed to be available.
Isn't that what she's talking about?
For us, it's 41,000, we got 41,000.
No, it's for, we've been talking about having an escrow amount to cover, uh, breakdown of the sidewalk or something like that. What are we gonna ask for? Is that what that figure is that you want?
Own product.
Yeah.
I suspect we oughta have the working, we oughta, we oughta meet with them, find out what it is they're gonna, they're.
Trying to do it.
Yeah. We would have advantage to do that.
Is that doing regular board meeting?
No, it's an off week.
What, what is the date?
Uh, Tuesday, January 10th.
Why can't they come in and write the board names?
I think he's gonna take that one?